I'd just like to remember in our moment of silence, a couple individuals who passed away since our last meeting. First one is Sanders Semasko, mother of Lieutenant Rich Semasko of our police department, and Ray Brooks, a fireman for 23 years, and he also was the head of the alarm service for the man seen up in the big bucket truck for the last 17 years was Ray Brooks. Ray passed away this past week also, so let's remember them in our thoughts tonight. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Go ahead.
Counselors, I am remiss, I should have done the sound check before we started. We'll start with Counselor Arden.
Page number 12.
Earl's 11.
Connell 10.
Vogel 9.
Tontar 8.
O'Brien 7.
Court number 6.
Cameron number 5.
Z number 4.
Jinta number 3.
Devlin number 2.
Cronin number 1.
Counselor meeting of November 13, 2017. Counselor Cronin. Present. Counselor Devlin.
Here.
Counselor Earl.
Present.
Counselor Argen.
Here.
Counselor Jinta.
Present.
Counselor Tontar.
Here.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Z.
Present.
Counselor Cameron.
Here.
Counselor Connell.
Present.
Counselor O'Brien.
Present.
All present, Mr. President. There's the mayor's update late file as always, then there are two other communications that were not in the packet, they are committee items. One is order number 55 relating to 59th Street, no parking, and the other is communication 113 with regards to a one-half marathon race.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late file items.
All in favor? Aye. Polls? Thank you. Public comment? You're all set. Stephanie? Our lone person. Go ahead.
Stephanie Nikicich, 93 High Street, President O'Brien and counselors. Progress has been made since Newburyport Preservation Trust's March letter to you asking for your involvement in a resolution of Berkeley Investments' treatment of the Toll 1690 House. Two orders tonight request your authorization of exterior preservation restrictions on the 1690 House and on the Toll Manufacturing Building itself. The 1690 House PR now includes an exterior restoration requirement and plan, thanks to the Massachusetts Historical Commission. The trust had input into the restoration plan and we are satisfied with it. We trust the city will diligently enforce its execution. We were not able to get support from the city or state to require interior restoration of the 1690 House. An alternate but significant public benefit is a preservation restriction on the Toll Manufacturing Building. The building was threatened with demolition in 1990. Today, although listed as contributory to the Newburyport Historic District, it is not protected. It is in an overlay district, not the de-cod. An exterior PR will correct this. This PR, however, has not yet been submitted to or approved by the state. The planning board's decision requires the applicant's diligent efforts to obtain it, and we hope that the council can have bearing on this. The planning board has agreed to release all but two occupancy permits before the Toll Building PR is recorded and the 1690 House is restored. Over the months, we have heard from many who worked at Toll or shopped at the 1690 House. I spent many happy Saturday afternoons there choosing a silver pattern. I don't think it is possible to overstate the importance of these buildings. They are not just old, they represent Toll Silversmiths and what it meant to Newburyport for 133 years, including generations of people still alive today. This has come a long way from last spring's $10,000 remuneration offer. It has been difficult, and we thank you for supporting the public.
Thank you. Great job. That's it. Mayor's comment?
President O'Brien, members of the City Council. The election, congratulations to the newly elected and returning members of the City Council. I would especially like to recognize two newly elected City Council members, Heather Chan, Lauren Grie, and Akhav Khan, our City Council members. Welcome.
This was a rigorous campaign season, and the voters have spoken. It's time to put the election behind us and unite in our work together ahead. I would also like to thank all the counselors who personally reached out to me and to offer their congratulatory sentiments. Veterans Day was held here on Friday, November 10, and the Newburyport's Director of Veterans Services, Kevin Hunt, once again organized a wonderful event, which started with a parade from Bartlet Mall and ended with a beautiful ceremony in our auditorium. Thank you also to Marshall Murray and the Newburyport Police Department and our local Coast Guard for providing our honor guards, Chief Leclerc and the Newburyport Fire Department and motorcycle vets for their escorts, the Newburyport High School marching band under the direction of Stephen Kohn, and Major Todd Hughes of the Newburyport Salvation Army, and Tony Fenari, the Director of DPS and his staff for the coordination and setup. I also would like to thank the counselors who attended the Veterans Day ceremony. I think there's a, we also need to recognize a very special person, Larry Sostak, who's a United States Marine Corps vet, who cleaned all of the headstones at the veteran cemetery. It was unfortunate that the weather did not permit our concluding march to the cemetery, but please take some time to go and view this outstanding work and this labor of love. Some updates on the Intermodal Facility Garage. I'm happy to say that all the tenants from the former fitness factory have relocated and agreements have been completed on our relocation required costs. New England Development has started the abatement process, that's the work that you see happening over there now, which is expected to be completed in the next seven to 10 days. Once the abatement documentation is approved, a demolition permit will be issued. Mobilization of equipment to demolish the building is expected to begin next week, the week of the 20th, with demolition expected to commence the week of the 27th, and it should take four to six weeks, or that's what they're allowed, for demolition. Following the demolition, the city will close on the property. It should also be noted that NED will be demolishing the old Fitzgerald Garage at the same time that's over on Liberty Street. I found that out today. I just thought you should be aware of that piece, too. Several filed sub bids had to be rebid due to issues with completion of the FTA certification form and will now be due on November 22. The general contractor bids are still due this Wednesday, November 15. In regards to the lawsuits filed by Cray, no issues have surfaced with either the FTA or Mass DOT, as it has no merit on our proceeding with development of this project and our city solicitors working with their lawyer to resolve. Attached to this draft, or at least on your desks, was the draft lease agreement with Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority. KP Law is reviewing, and several issues have been raised also by the Planning Department. If any counselor would like to provide input, please do so to Paul O'Brien, Chief Administrative Officer, by Monday, November 20. The Plum Island Hydrant Project, as of last week, a total of 32 hydrants and 15 isolation valves have been replaced, which represents about 22% completion of the total project. Airback was out last week, or I'm sorry, the week of October 15, for winter timing of the system, and the replacement of repeaters has been completed. We've been continuing to work on the Woodyer Bridge mitigation for the city. One piece that I know has been very important is the completion of the Swafford sidewalk, and we hope to have that design completed next week and then accepted. The Government Finance Officers Association, I am pleased to announce that once again, this is our sixth year in a row, we have received the distinguished budget presentation award, and my thanks to Ethan Manning, our finance director, for his leadership on our annual budget. The Superintendent Search Committee, we received 40 letters of interest and initiated outreach to all applicants to ensure their availability on a multi-day commitment during January 2018 to review resumes. On November 6, the school committee met with Arthur Betancourt and Carolyn Burke, our consultant team from New England School Development Council, who will be leading the search. Inquiries from prospective applicants have already been received by NASDAQ. A home rule petition tonight, I have put before the City Council, a home rule petition to be sent to the legislator to grant our city permission to hold a special election in the spring of 2018. This is required for us to adopt Section 41(c) and 1/2, allowing us to reduce property taxes for eligible seniors by 10%. And Revere just passed this measure with 62?
62.
I'm sorry, that's a tight, it shouldn't be 70, it's 62% of the vote there. And in addition, free cash transfer, as I mentioned in my last update, that many years ago, we used to have a separate line item in the highway budget for roads, and that was eliminated during tight budget times, and now with the changes in Chapter 90, our roads and sidewalk money from the state, you know, we are really restricted in terms of the kind of roadwork we can do. So if we are able to transfer this $300,000, we're able to do more work on roads in the city, and I'd like this to become an annual line item in our budget. One thing I forgot to mention is that on Wednesday night, the 8th, a meeting, joint meeting with the Waterfront Trust and the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority, we discussed the errors of DPS in terms of working on that drainage project that went through NRA property and really shortened the way considerably. Again, we apologize, our efforts, we're trying to address the drainage and the business issues downtown, and the NRA has agreed to work with us, would like us to finish the project, so it looks good for the holiday season, for the businesses downtown, and then we'll revisit it in the spring and decide how we can address widening that way to what was adjudicated by the Supreme Court, that particular historic way. And again, our apologies, we were just trying to deal with that drainage issue there. In addition, we, as you know, I had been, my administration has been meeting with members of the Waterfront Trust and the NRA and the settlers to change the Waterfront Trust docs. We used a lot of the consensus document that you approved by the City Council and our own work, we had achieved, I would say about 95%, 98% consistency, and now we've been waiting for attorneys from the Waterfront Trust, the NRA, and Bill Harris to finalize those documents. They've introduced a new letter, which is an LOI, a letter of interest, from the NRA to the Waterfront Trust. There's been some back and forth on this particular document, hasn't been well-accepted by the Waterfront Trust, so that has to be resolved first before we can move forward on finalizing the trust documents. But I have been assured that there will be additional efforts on the part of the attorneys. One other piece that I think I had mentioned to you, Jamie Buchanan, who was the attorney hired by the NRA, who did a study of the filled tidelands of the NRA and had identified or recommended that they should be put out to bid. That concerned me greatly, as I think it should concern anybody in this room, about that property being put out to bid. So I asked Copeland and Page to do a review of the findings, and they came back under, and I can send it all to you there, review, that being a redevelopment authority under the procurement laws, they are exempt from putting that property out for bid, which I think is the direction that we really want to see that going. So that's my update for tonight, and I wish all a very happy Thanksgiving next week, and go Clippers.
Just one question. On the Fitzgerald Garage, do we know what's going to happen after it's gone?
I was told that they're going to leave it just as they did the Lombardi property for the time being. At one point, several years ago, I had heard that they were interested in doing something kind of mirroring the condos that are there with the underground parking, but at this point, there's been no design. I think they're focusing on waterfront lots, which is what they should be doing.
But are they going to let people park there?
I don't know, but I can certainly find that out once it's demolished.
That's a good question.
Thank you.
What's a good question? Can I touch on more parking to keep going into the holidays? 2017 meeting. There are four transfers, all from free cash, all going to Budget Finance. First transfer is 44. It's $20,000 going to high school roof repairs. Transfer 45, $35,000 to Rail Trail Phase 2 Capital Project. Transfer 46, $373,000 going to General Fund Budget Reserve, same amount. Transfer 47, $300,000 to roadway reconstruction program, same amount, again, all going to Budget Finance. There are four communications. First communication is Communication 116. That's the Retirement Board Expense Budget, calendar year 2018. That's changed at the request of President O'Brien. Typically, we have always sent that, always received and filed that, so that's a change from Budget Finance. And Communication 117, a letter regarding the Marlow Foundation Funding Directive, that's to go to Budget Finance. Communication 118 is with respect to Plum Fest 5/19/2018, to be received and filed, that's private property. Communication 119 is a letter regarding the Toll Project and the Samuel Morris House, aka 1690 House, to go to planning and development. There are no first reading appointments. Counselor Z.
I just have a question about transfer 46. If we're going to act on the tax rate tonight, do we need to act on that transfer at the same time? Don't they go together in terms of setting the rate and moving the money from?
I was going to refer to Budget Finance, maybe.
What, do they do the same? Do they go together, is what I'm asking. In other words, if we set the tax rate and it's predicated upon a transfer happening, shouldn't they go together? Wouldn't that make sense?
Yeah, they're going together. They're both going to Budget. They're both going, they're both going to be referred to Budget Finance.
Okay.
All right, so, and they will come out together.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Polls? Move on to regular agenda. Any questions from Mayor's update? All in favor? Aye. Polls? Point in second meeting. Appointment number 63, Karina Maltz, 15 Summit Place to the Disabilities Commission until 11:30 2020. Appointment number 64, Lisa Rowan, 17 Boardman Street, Disabilities Commission until 11:1 2020. Appointment number 65, Keith Carter, 13 Monarch Way, Kingston, New Hampshire, as a special police officer. There are following two reappointments. Appointment number 66, Crispin S. Miller, 1 Parker Ridge Way, to the Tree Commission until 11:1 2020. Appointment number 67, Constance Preston, 18 Atwood Street, again to the Tree Commission, 11:30 2020. Second. Roll call, please. Counselor Cronin. Yes. Counselor Devlin. Yes. Counselor Earl. Yes. Counselor Argen. Yes. Counselor Jinta. Yes. Counselor Tontar. Yes. Counselor Vogel. Yes. Counselor Z. Yes. Counselor Cameron. Yes. Counselor O'Brien. Yes. Move on to orders for the night. Order 59. Order 59 is submitted by Counselor Tontar. It is approving and authorizing the acceptance of a preservation restriction between the city, acting through the Historical Commission, and Newburyport Landing, that is First Republic Corporation for the property located at 262 Merrimack Street, known as the 1690 House and the Samuel Morris House. That would be as required by the planning board pursuant to a special permit under the Toll Complex Redevelopment Overlay District.
Motion to refer to planning and development?
Second. Counsel? 1690 House is in Ward 4. It's on the far eastern frontier of the ward, but it is in Ward 4. And I think most, a lot of people know about the so-called 1690 House, but maybe are unaware of all the work that has taken place. I'd like to first of all, thank the Newburyport Preservation Trust. I'd like to thank the Newburyport Historical Commission. I'd like to thank the Massachusetts Historical Commission, the Planning Department and the Planning Board. Barney Salt is here, if there are any further questions. Essentially, as I see it, you know, what happened is a failure of the owner of the property to protect the historic character of the outside of the structure as well as the inside. And the agreement that is reached, was reached, is that the outside of the structure will be returned to its historic character, which is very positive. Secondly, the inside unfortunately will not, all right, be returned. However, in restitution for that, the owner has agreed that the Toll Building will have a preservation restriction placed on it. And currently, that building, which I feel is extremely important to the character of the city, is not protected. So this is, I think, a very important win for those of us who feel strongly about preserving the historic character of the city. There are a couple of other details I'd like the Planning Department to pay attention to. One is on that preservation restriction on the Toll Building, that there is a question as to whether that would be a restriction placed on it by the Mass Historical, which would make it a permanent restriction. We would very much like to see that happen. The applicant is described as having made a diligent effort to putting that forward, so we'd like to see that, we prefer to see it be permanent rather than just city-based. Secondly, there are two historic signs that will be placed, both in terms of design and placement. Newburyport Preservation Trust is being consulted on the language. I think perhaps in committee, you might want to also consist, consult with them concerning language that would, where they would write the actual language or suggest, strongly suggest, the language that would be on those signs. Finally, before November 1, when the Planning Board came down with its revision of condition number 11, five occupancy permits were allowed, five more, I believe, were allowed on November 1. Three more will be given to the developer when the 1690 House PR is approved, and then only two are being held back for the last two conditions, which are the historic signs on the one hand, and on the other hand, the preservation of the Toll Building. And you might want to, I guess that, Barney, you can help me, that's a done deal? The number of occupancy permits being held back?
We're holding out two until the whole, all of the conditions of the permit are in there.
But only two are being held?
Yeah, one of which is the 1690 House.
1690 House.
And one is a new one.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Polls? Order 60. Order 60 is a mirror order to the one that I just read. It relates to the Toll Building itself, its Historic Commission, and FRCA of Newburyport LLC, again submitted by Counselor Tontar. Motion to refer to planning and development? Second. All in favor? Aye. Polls? Order 61. Order 61 is an order relative to a special act which would authorize the city of Newburyport to hold a special election for the purpose of accepting the terms of clause 51(c) and 1/2 of Section 5 of Chapter 59 of the Mass General Laws. This is the order that the mayor referred to in our update. It goes on for a number of pages. it is needing a sponsor. Miss President? I'd be happy to sponsor it. I thought I sponsored, did I agree to sponsor that? It needs a sponsor on it. I apologize, it's an overlook on me. It's fine. You got it. I'm putting down Sponsored by Counselor Tontar.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance Committee at the hall?
Second. Second. All in favor? Aye. Polls? Order 62. Order 62 is the order that reads as follows. All the property within the city of Newburyport be taxed equally, and that the method to determine the percentage of the local levy to be assessed by each class of property is established by the adoption of a residential factor of blank for FY 2018. Submitted Counselor Tontar. This is with respect to the Tax Classification Act hearing that we just had. Motion to refer to Budget and Finance. Second. All in favor? Aye. Polls? 63, the same. Next order is the blank order for the city of Newburyport tax rate for FY 2018, again submitted by Counselor Tontar. Motion to refer to Budget and Finance. Second. All in favor? Aye. Order 64. City of Newburyport accepts with gratitude a gift from the Newburyport Parks Conservancy in the amount of $1,689 for the purpose of beautification of Cushing Park, Atwood Park, and the building of dugouts at the Richie Eaton Baseball Field located behind the Knark-Molan Opera Elementary School, and appropriate said funds to the Parks Department revolving account in accordance with MG 44, Section 53A. Again, submitted Charles Tontar. Motion to refer to Budget and Finance. Second. All in favor? Aye. Polls? Order 65. Whereas Chapter 59, Section 5K of the General Laws, establish local rules pertaining to the senior property tax work-off program. Whereas the income limit for the program is currently set at the median household income for Massachusetts, parentheses, $67,846, now therefore be it ordered that the City Council of the city of Newburyport hereby sets the income limit for senior property tax work-off program to be based on the median household income of Newburyport, as determined by the census, currently $85,556. Submitted Counselor Tontar. Motion to refer to Budget and Finance. Second. All in favor? Aye. Polls? Ordinances. Ordinance 13 is a Is the second reading, the record will note. Counselor Argen has recused himself. It's the second reading of ordinance 13, which pertains to a zoning ordinance, so-called the High Street Residential A and High Street Residential B. Section 3B describes these districts. There's a zoning map that is also referenced. It's a table of use regulations, 5, and it is jointly submitted, Counselors Connell and Cameron. Motion to approve? Second. So Cameron? It's a good idea two weeks ago, and it's still a good idea tonight. Okay. Eloquent. It's eloquent in the room. Roll call? So roll call on ordinance number 13, Counselor Cronin. Yes. Counselor Devlin. Yes. Counselor Earl. Yes. Counselor Argen has recused himself. Counselor Jinta. Yes. Counselor Tontar. Yes. Counselor Vogel. Yes. Counselor Z. Yes. Counselor Cameron. Yes. Counselor Connell. Yes. Counselor O'Brien. Yes. And yes, one recuse, second reading, ordinance passes. Order 14. It was a nail-biter. Heard. Ordinance 14, second reading, Chapter 8, Article 1, Section 8-1, no smoking at certain public facilities. Impertinent part, within 10 feet of any portion of the in-street playground. Map 4, Parcel 2, within 10 feet of any portion of the in-street fountain. Same map, Parcel 30. There's a requirement that the posting, that there's a notice posted of the prohibition for no-smoking signs to be placed. There's a violation and penalties. Any private citizen who violates this chapter shall be subject to a fine of $100. Multiple violations shall be each separate offense. Submitted Counselor Argen.
Motion to approve second reading?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call. Counselor Cronin. Yes. Counselor Devlin. Yes. Counselor Earl's. Yes. Counselor Argen. Yes. Counselor Jinta. Yes. Counselor Tontar. Yes. Counselor Vogel. Yes. Counselor Z. Yes. Counselor Cameron. Yes. Counselor Connell. Yes. Counselor O'Brien. Yes. Second reading, ordinance passes unanimously. Order 116. Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Second reading, ordinance passes unanimously.
Ordinance 16.
Ordinance 16, second reading of an ordinance, section 13-97. Thank you. Road races, walkathons, bicycle, and other multi-disciplined events.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor. It is, the pertinent part that changed was-
Page 3 of the ordinance, section 13, or bullet 13.
Which reads, Americans with Disability Act event organizers are reminded of the importance of and expectation of adherence to the ADA Act of 1990 and subsequent applicable amendments. Jointly sponsored, Counselor Zed and Devlin.
Roll call?
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Argueman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes second reading ordinance.
Thank you.
16.
Many items. Budget and finance.
Motion to remove order 57, a parks gift acceptance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yeah, Mr. President, this is a gift from the Richie Eaton Foundation, as well as Willer Brader Technologies, to the Richie Eaton Baseball Field. And it was, recommend approval by three to nothing in Budget and Finance Committee, and we're very grateful for the gifts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you. Join Ed?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. We met with members of the school committee last Monday at the senior center. We had two items on our agenda to talk about. One was an update on the superintendent search. As the mayor mentioned, she's got 40 applicants that, for the search committee, and the consultant, which is New England School Development Council, they will be helping them determine what size the committee should be, so it will operate properly. The consultant will also be advertising the opening in multiple places, and from where we're told, they'll reach out to applicants throughout the entire U.S. and Canada, which is very interesting to see that it would, it would go international. The search committee, or the search officially started, I guess they told us on Monday, and it will go 128 days from now. And they gave us the criteria of what our current superintendent contract on contains now, which is a pay rate of $185,000. It includes health, dental, life insurance, 25 days of vacation, 15 sick days, four personal days, six bereavement days, a $4,000 annuity, $4,000 in travel stipend, and $5,000 in professional fees. And we're told that maybe this compensation might be low compared to other districts.
Wow.
This is very interesting. The second item that we talked about was the upcoming bus contract. So we're in a three, the third year of a three-year bus contract right now, and in the spring, it will be up for discussion. And when we talked to the school committee about it, they expressed their interest in discussing ideas with their business office. So the business office would, would be the department that would actually put the scope together of what the contract would look like. And what the school committee would really like to see is more flexibility in hours, whether it has to do with late buses, or maybe the impact of late school times, or the impact of possibly going to 990 hours in the middle school. There was an idea of possibly hiring a consultant, and again, this was just our, you know, a roundtable discussion in regards to building the contract, and then maybe that consultant may be able to get more than just one bidder on it, because our existing contract only had one bidder. So the idea would be to see that maybe we could have expanded hours with our buses, get more services out of our buses, but actually get a competitive price.
How many hours are there now? 960 is it up?
900.
You said they were going to look, 900?
Yeah. Yep. So we did ask about how the process went, and again, the business office sort of drafts it, then it goes to the finance subcommittee of the, of the entire school committee, and then once the finance subcommittee, just like we do in our subcommittees, reviews it, then it's pushed out to the full school committee for a vote. So, that's what I have today, sir.
Thank you. License and permits.
Motion to remove communication 91, the A-frame signs as star nails.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. We took this out of committee with a vote of two to one against approving this essentially remote sign. It's the corner of Liberty and State Street. It's a, it's a, in my experience, I've seen it moved from the Ballard to the other side of the ramp to various sunbee places. We thought in discussion that this might be an ideal location for taking a look at the wayfinding effort that we were talking about, and we'll be meeting on tomorrow, not budget, not license and permits, but city services or public utilities. In any event, we voted no, the majority voted no on that, and I will stand against it. The sign has already been moved. Lois has already been talking with them, looking for another location. They do have a sign in front of their, of their building, but it was just a little bit awkward where it was. And believe me, as a, as a retail owner, I understand completely the, the need for getting somebody into your retail establishment. That's how you eat. Somebody comes in and buys something. But this was a little awkward in its placement. We'll encourage looking at this in a more stable fashion with the wayfinding. So that's how it goes. Two to one was against.
Counselor Devlin?
I was the one for this. We've approved remote A-frame signs in the last couple of months. Number two, I saw it when it was against the Ballard. It was fine. I didn't feel it was in the way. Thought it, I didn't feel it was obstruction, obstructing the sidewalk anymore than the patio seating is, and, and I thought it was, you know, tasteful and very helpful to them down the street. And that's the third thing. We don't have wayfinding yet, and I think we should give our businesses every advantage they can have, and so that's why I voted to approve this. Thank you.
Counselor Argueman?
I'm grateful to hear from the committee that they voted two-one against it. I think this is a bad location. I mean, I have objections as a word to counselor in general that I don't need to repeat here, but on this one specifically, that, that corner is a heavily trafficked corner. Also, Liberty Street businesses are already pretty visible. I don't, I just don't think it's necessary to do this A-frame sign. It's totally within our discretion. We don't have to approve it, and I hope we don't.
Counselor Junta?
Did we offer the business owner any alternatives?
Counselor Vogel?
Thank you. We're certainly have, having discussion. Lois can speak to that further if you wish, but it wasn't turned down just out of hand. There was conversation, and it's still ongoing.
Counselor Junta?
I generally wouldn't vote against something that would help a small business, but I do defer to the ward counselor on what's best in ward two. But Lois, if you have any information that you could give us on where your conversations are, just want to make sure somehow the business is taken care of in some way.
I did, I did, I have had conversations with him in the past regarding the, the placement of the sign, and he does realize that right there in the corner is dangerous for pedestrians and whatever. Waiting, actually for the committee to decide where, where he can put the sign, which will still be visible for, for his business.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll, we'll have a conversation with him.
Okay.
So you want to turn this down, or you want to table it?
Happy to table it.
I'd like to just make a friendly suggestion. If we're going to go back to the owner and review a location, I'd like to recommit it back till I, then to table it and then have to do whatever.
I second that motion.
So I'll, I'll remove my motion to approve.
Motion to refer back to license and permits, please. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Motion. You okay?
One no? Yeah. One no.
What, okay. Do you hear this?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to remove 109, the A-frames of Ivy Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion approved.
Second. Counsel Vogel?
Thank you. This sign already exists. It's, and actually, the full disclosure, Ivy Lane will be out of there at the end of, at the end of the year. That area was designated for taking a look at it for our A-frame effort, I mean, our wayfinding efforts. So we'll discuss that further tomorrow night. But for the moment, it was requested by the counselor from Ward 1 that we go ahead and approve it. She's gone through all the efforts, so it was three to one in favor of approving it.
Three to one. Counsel Argueman?
Three to nothing.
Yeah, just for the record on this one, this is a frustrating one for me as a word to counselor, because there's already a sign that's affixed, a blade sign affixed to the building that points back to the building. Also, there's a display. The law that we worked on, we spent a lot of time figuring out what kind of displays would be allowed of merchandise, and I don't believe this business has been in compliance. So I just want to be on the record, my objection, but, you know, if they're out in a year, and signs are there anyway, so it's kind of academic what we do here.
Counsel Vogel?
Thank you. With regard to the counselor's comment about the merchandising, there's been a lot of conversations with the owner, and hopefully we'll get that resolved.
Counsel Z?
I just wanted to speak in favor. The, the person leaving at the end of December notwithstanding, I think we, we spent a lot of time collectively on the signs ordinance. We prescribed a formula or a way to do things. This person went to the effort. It did come in back in September. So I, I think, A, if you've been down there, which I'm sure all of us have, it's a justifiable need, given where the business is located. I would somewhat respectfully disagree with the Ward 2 counselor, just even with the blade sign up there, it's, it's a little bit tucked away. And the process was followed here, and I'd be happy to make it expire on 12/31 if that is of interest to others to help it along, but if it's not, it would expire, you know, essentially it would expire when the business leaves, would be my understanding. Thank you.
Counsel Connell?
Yes, a question of the, of the chairman. The, the permit goes with the property for the business owner, which is, I believe it's the business owner, is that correct? Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Is that one no? Thank you.
Motion to remove communication 114.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Counsel Vogel?
Thank you. This one is a little bit, a little bit more tricky. This came out of committee with some split votes. This is regard to Metz's request to put an A-frame sign on the corner of what would be Parker and Graff, and that came out of committee, split two to one in favor. And then also request to put one at Parker and New Boston, right there where the entrance to his business is. That came out of committee, three to zero. There was considerable amount of discussion about signs and wayfinding and so on and so forth in the business park, down the road from, well, at EPI, just up from the Arwood Building, there's a whole group of signs there, and then further down at New Pasture Road, there's a whole group of signs. So that, we did have conversation about what's going on in the business park, and we're hoping to kind of address that later on as we get, as we get going, perhaps with wayfinding or some discussion with the business park. But it came out of committee, as I say, the Parker and Graff was two to one in favor, and the Boston Way, Parker was three to nothing in favor. So I don't know how you want to split that.
Two to one opposed, correct?
Two, two to one opposed. No, two to one in favor.
Two to one in favor.
So I don't know how you want to split that.
We'll take the Boston Way and Parker first. What vote of that was what?
The Parker Way and Boston was unanimous in favor.
Any discussion on that? Counsel Cameron?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So isn't there already a fixed sign there that kind of, when you pull out of there, kind of blocks your view to the right? Is that going to stay there?
The fixed sign on the, on the-
Boston Way and Parker Street.
That, with, it's also related to the train.
Train station.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's going to stay there?
Mm-hmm. Yes. That's not, that's not before us.
So they, where would the, where would the additional A-frame sign be? Is it-
If you go there, it's right there on the corner, for example. For purposes of example, you put it out, so. Next to the Arwood. I just wanted to be sure you knew what you were talking about, that's all. Yeah.
Any further discussion? Counsel Connell?
Yeah, Mr. President, it seems to me that this is similar to the first item that came out of committee. It's still in discussion. It would seem sensible for the committee to have a discussion of that street, and how signs might be appropriately placed there, and come back with a comprehensive recommendation. This is not going to be the last such petition we get if this one passes, so I, my recommendation would be that we either table it or recommit it so that it can be fully vetted in committee, and then come back with a comprehensive recommendation to address the problem.
Counsel Vogel?
I'm happy to take it back and go have a longer conversation with him if you wish.
Counsel Devlin?
If I may, this one was recommended out of committee three to nothing, this Parker, Boston Way and Parker Street. There was no confusion about this one. I don't think this one needs to go back in. Look, this guy, I did, I was going to say it for the two to one, but he's invested a lot of money, and it's a beautiful place out there. He invested anticipating a building being built out there that might not be built for a couple of years, you know, that got caught up in litigation. It is a popular spot, but I have had many, many people, I've said, you know, you've got to go try Metz's, and they're like, where is it? And I'm, they're friends from out of town, like, you drive by the street. So that's why I think either one of these, we don't have wayfinding out there, there are all sorts of signs out there. This is a different animal than Ward 2 downtown. We have many different styles of building out there. We have many different styles of signage out there. I've driven, for 13 years, I drove Graff Road out to 95 into Lynn, and I never noticed any of the signs out there, that none of them are, you know, we're talking about aesthetics, and this guy is trying to feed his family. So I, I would recommend that we don't delay it, and that we don't delay this one, and we don't delay the other one. Both of them came out with positive recommendations. This is an ongoing discussion. We're talking about wayfinding, but that's going to be downtown first in some pilot programs. In the meantime, it's our, it's our duty to help them out, you know, if we get a lot of complaints, this is something that we have to do every year. We have to approve these every year. They don't go to Clerk Jones for these. We can, if we get a lot of complaints, or, or, you know, something shifts in the public opinion with these, we can address it. opinion with these, we can address it, we've got a year from now, we can address it. So I would say we give him the opportunity and to use this and see if we do get a lot of negative feedback. My guess is we're not going to. Thank you.
Counsel Vogel?
For the record and for the oddity, I agree.
Any further, okay, Counsel Junta?
Just one more quick question, and Counselor Cameron brought it up, so I know when I'm traveling, heading towards Route 1, there's a sign there, is the idea to put an A-frame on the other corner, so when you're heading in the other direction, which you can't see that first sign when you're heading in the other direction, so...
It's there for demonstrative purposes, man.
It makes sense to me, okay, I understand what he's doing.
We can drive by there tomorrow. You can buy me breakfast.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pos?
No.
One no. Move on to the second.
Do we need to...
No.
Parker and...
We broke him out.
And Graff Road.
Yeah, so I said, well, move on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It says Scotland.
It says Parker Street.
Scotland, right.
Yeah, okay. It's not, it's okay.
Years ago it was.
Okay. Well, that one, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. President. That one came out of committee two to one, I thought that the Counselor at large did a great job describing it. That came out of committee two to one, two in favor and one against, so.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Pos?
No.
Is that one no or two no's?
Three.
Three no's.
Do I hear four?
Mr. President, could we start with a motion to approve, that was by...
I've motioned approved it.
Second.
Thank you.
So eight yes, three no's, the correct. Okay?
No's, one, two, three, thank you.
No discussion? I had that one. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President. Planning and development?
Nothing, coming out of committee, but we are meeting jointly tomorrow night with planning and development with Public Utilities on complete streets, and also the wayfaring signage, which is also posted as a committee of the whole, if you are free, we'd love to see you. Seven o'clock.
Here. Here. Public safety.
Yes, Mr. President, motion to remove Communication 113.
Haberside Half Marathon.
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion to remove it? All in favor?
Aye.
Now the motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Discussion, Counsel Cronin?
This just came out of committee, three to nothing, this is a...
Perennial.
It starts, I believe, near the high school, I'm sorry, starts at Richie Woodworking, and then goes out in the industrial park into Newbury. Doesn't really affect us that much at all, other than the initial start in the industrial park, and then comes back the rail trail and ends at Michael's Haberside. They're shuttling people from Michael's to the start, which is down in the industrial park, so we haven't received any complaints on this in the last couple of years.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pos? Anything else?
Nothing further.
Public Utilities?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to remove Order 56.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pos? Go ahead.
Motion to approve Order 56.
Second.
This is a routine application, Mr. President, Swayze Alexander Landscaping, licensed contractor, all the paperwork is in order, it's good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Pos? Move on. What's that?
Did you say good to the order?
Nothing moves? Good to the order? Clerk Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to take this opportunity, I don't always do this, and I should do this every election. As everyone in the room knows, it was a heavily attended election, we had over 7,000 voters, a lot of pressure on the poll workers and the office, and I just wanted to give a strong compliment to both of them. They're professionals, it was a long day, they had a lot of pressure, many issues, and they withstood it, so thank you very much.
What was the percentage?
Percentage was 50%, which in some ways seems low, but we have over 14,000 voters now, which are more than we've ever had, and we did not have early voting as we did a year ago, so really, in effect, we almost had as many people go to the polls as we did during the presidential, if that makes any sense. Congratulations to everybody. Including myself.
Counsel O'Brien?
Thank you.
Yeah, just an announcement I wanted to pass on, many of us probably got an email, but there is a community leader's breakfast for Beacon Coalition, I'm checking feverishly here on the date, RSVP to Tina Los by Wednesday, the 22nd, so you've got another week, and the event, I believe, is in December. December 1st, Friday, December 1. Friday, December 1. 8:30. 8:30, just like he said, so hope you can make it, thanks. Blue Ocean Event Center.
Anything else? I'd just like to wish the boys cross-country division four champs, Eastern Mass champs, Sam Alcoviva came in number one, and wish them well this weekend in their race, and also the Division III girls soccer team won, again, one to nothing north, and wish them good luck this weekend, so. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have, we have to be on the table, we have to take it all away. Yep. Motion to remove the executive sessions from the table?
Second.
Roll call?
Should we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pos? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Aye.